I could be on the radio. You've got three minutes. Jason Nunes, Paul Newroad. I just purchased a property a year ago. The septic system is five years old. I live in a house alone, two-bedroom home. Virtually, the septic system should be my lifeline. Now, this assessment coming up, and this has been in the works for years, there should have probably been a disclosure on how to call my holding attorney. That's unfair. It should not be mandated by no means, no means at all. And I don't think we're gonna hear the end of this one yet.
My name is Janice Steffens, and I'm a 670 Nadyo Corbin. So, to follow up on what you presented, which is I beside. How many of you up there make more than $100,000? How many of you make more than $50,000? I see a few people squirming. How many of you making less than $15,000? So, for you to say that you want to ask everyone else to disclose their information, their personal information, to some stranger that comes to the door, or to send it out via mail, via whatever, for anyone to look at? Why is it that it's okay for all of you to be uncomfortable and not disclose, but you want all of them to? That's not acceptable. Secondly, how many of you up here, across the whole panel? How many of you is this sewer project actually going to effect? How many of you are getting the sewers? I don't see any hands. You wanna mandate something on townspeople that make a fraction of what you make every year. You wanna put them into death where they cannot recover. You want many of them to lose their homes. When they lose their homes, are you gonna buy that home? How are you, how are they going to sell their homes? No one's gonna want anything to do with this. Now, onto another question. Thank you, I still have time, because you haven't answered any of my questions yet. So, when you finally get into this project, how many of you reached out to your colleagues in other cities and towns and said, "How did you guys tackle this?" Two people that have nothing to do with the town council that's mandating this? Seriously? That's your job, every one of you. You're mandating these people to spend all of this money, all of us, to take part in this, when they can't afford it. You have no clue what they're dealing with day to day, but you're mandating this on them. You're mandating that they lose their homes. And you sit up there, and excuse, this is directed to you, sir. The only one who sat there and said that he majored in communications. So, you sit there, and you tell everyone who's upset about these sewers that you majored in communications, so you know that every time that you're shaking everybody off, that you're not looking at one person that stands up here to speak their mind, that implore you to please listen to this business. You sit there, and you look at the clock, you look around, you look at everything else that you possibly can, and you know especially full well what that body language says.
My name is Bob Hamer. I'm on Arizona Street, so I'm on the entirely Lake area. I've been paying the assessment since 2011. And in 2011, after the assessment came, and it was initially, came in at, we're actually gonna pay eight percent interest, not six, it was eight at that time. We came to a meeting, and then, for whatever reason, it was put down to six, which it currently is now. But my wife and I did some research as far as, we were, we had some questions as far as grants go. And, you know, why weren't there federal grants paying for this? And at the time, we came upon some community development block grants, specifically for preserving clean water that the federal government has made available. And so, were any of those received ever for this?
At the last meeting that we had about three weeks ago to discuss issues that are similar to tonight, information was given out about community development block grants for individuals needing assistance tying into the sewer, and also assistance with a septic system if that's what they needed. That information was given out. If you need that information, you can, or anyone else can call the town manager's office, and they'll send you to the right department.
Okay, so there were federal grants given to the town?
Well, the individual who needs the assistance would have to apply for a community development block grant.
Oh, it's individuals apply for this?
Yes, and that information is available in the planning office. So, you can call the planning office directly, or call the town manager's office to get something on the road to plan.
I see. Okay, and then, my other question is, is there a plan yet for any recourse for the people in my area who've been paying for the last six years on the assessment as far as if things are gonna be put to a halt? Are we, what are we to do from there?
The people who live on Arizona Street and others, no plan to put the assessment still hold.
So, we keep paying?
Yes.
I have to beg you, there is East Aladdin, Coventry, not the top of the Capitol. I've said this several times. I know you, you guys know all the hardships anybody has. I don't know, I'd like to know if you guys are thinking about there while we're talking and trying to explain people that have hardship. I mean real hardship. You have to think of those people. $100,000 a year, oh man, I could do this with that. But that's beside the point. I voted, the town of Coventry, should say we people, the town of Coventry voted for the sewers not to happen, okay? Many years ago, they happened. How come we don't? Anybody who can answer that, I'd like to know.
I think we have them, Mr. Gorm, through state enabling legislation, that our legislators back in, I don't know, was it 97 that it was pulled together? 1997? And again, enabling, no, 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 no. The enabling legislation that was brought forth to the State House, again, that was something done long before all of our time on the council, but I believe it was something that had to do that if, and I believe in the legislation, and Mr. Rep. Tackus might be able to tell us that, he's, you know, he was on the legislation, that moved some of these things forward here. They said 97, it's not for all of the taxpayers to pay. I think what the enabling legislation meant that if it was put in, it would be financed by the people who were on the sewer line, which is why it probably didn't have to go to a vote by the people. Again, I don't know why or how it was put in at that point, but I believe, if I'm correct, Mr. Gorm, can you speak to it? You're a legislator and an attorney, so.
That's correct.
My time is running, will you guys answer my question?
I'll try to answer your question a different way. The law in Rhode Island provides that the town can borrow money based on revenues anticipated from the installation of sewers. And that's what allowed the town to go forward with the sewer project without having a voter approval referendum. It's the legislation that's in place and has been in place for several years.
It's always been a fine authority, is that what you're telling me?
No, I'm saying that the law has changed since the referendum was placed before the voters. It is, it is not always necessary for the town to obtain voter approval in order to expand the size of its sewer system.
Okay, so, we get this thing, it was around the border, correct? Bicycle and road, and then we're gonna head with the class.
The, you have that on town with the two resolutions, to stop it, and to stop the projects, and to reassess how it will hold.
I can answer the question a little further for you, sir. The town council, if it wants to, can ask for voter approval on the expansion of the sewer system. And I think, I think it's fair to say, based on the reaction, that that is something that they'll probably consider and examine very carefully. All right?
The only other thing I wanna say is, I hope these guys do the right thing. We don't want it. Just don't want it. I can't hear any of the stuff that they have. We don't want it. You can hear, you can hear the complaints, you can do whatever you want. The bottom line, we don't want, because they're gonna create more hardship than we already have. And we don't have the money from the law. I'm fine. If the people that live on the street that I'm in, guys, that walk around with canes and waters, you don't really care, do you? Not here, I know you stop. Can't stop like that, because you're bored, you know? Okay? I don't wanna stop.
Hello, my name is Mary Ward, ten Ninth Street. First question is, do any of you know where Ninth Street is?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And, well, let's go back to 2011, because nobody on Ninth Street got one a year off. Whatever it was you sent. And another thing, back in 2011, a lot of those houses were foreclosed, abandoned. Many, many in that neighborhood are apartments. And it doesn't respond to your survey, so that's, is a problem. The other thing I wanted to say too, or, I forgot. The cost was supposed to be like $13,000. We were promised that at a meeting in 2011. Mr. Cody told us at that meeting that why our area was being targeted was because it has a majority of housing in it. So, that would bring in more tax revenue to continue with the sewers. And basically, that's what it's about. Just to let everybody here know, when we came in 2011, and there's a lot more of you here now, it got voted down and it got postponed. So, I'm hoping that's what happens tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Mosi. I live at 56 Benoit Street. And I don't really know what to say, but I've seen your language, and the scene, the way that you all looked at us tonight. I think it's repulsive what you have done. You are not considering any of the people for you. When was the last time you had a town hall meeting with 1,500 people? They're all saying no. Why would you mandate something that nobody in the town wants? Remember, all these people behind you voted for you. And they all said no. For the people, by the people. That's what we grew up on, right? Remember that 1776? Yeah. Another thing I want to say to you is, how can you guys really look us in the eye and say, "We're gonna charge you 6%, but we're only paying 3"? Where is that 3% gonna go? And also, man who's on the Deambler Construction? Really? That is definitely a conflict of interest, because he stands to get a paycheck from this. His company stays in business because he's gonna get the contract for the Coventry sewer system. That's wrong. I need more than 300 left to use myself out of that. It's Rhode Island, I hate to say that word, I'm gonna say it right now. Thirty-eight studios. You guys are making some money on this, and none of you guys even have the sewers in your district. Why would you even vote for that? What are you guys thinking? Why don't I charge you $25,000 and get my stuff taken care of? Would you like that? I don't think you would. So, I hope you guys do the right thing. Forget the sewers, because no one in Coventry ever wants them. I lived in Warwick my whole life. I just moved here a year ago. They don't want Coventry, they want sewers here. Everything's fine, it's a great little town. Let's keep it that way, let's get the tax rate down, save some money for people. Thank you.
Great, I'll shoot 11th and Sixth Street. Forty years ago, when this whole project started, everything was different. We had a lot of manufacturing, we had big farms, we didn't have federal regulations, state regulations. Bodies of water today are a lot cleaner than they were forty years ago. So, what I'm saying to you is this. Everybody's on board with the sewers, 'cause we've been on board with the sewers for forty years. The reason we put the sewers in, 'cause we are harming the waterways and the local drinking water. That's one. The big manufacturers and the farms that were polluting the rivers and the lakes aren't here anymore. The water is cleaner. Unless you can show harm to these bodies of water from not having sewers, what are we doing? That's why we have sewers, to stop the harm from our water supplies. We don't have harm to our water supplies anymore. Why do we have sewers? Good septic systems don't last twenty years, they last forever. The problem why a septic system fails, 'cause the majority of people that have them don't realize you can't put bleach in your septic system, you can't put fats in your septic system. When you have a large group of people at your house, and you make food, and all that oils from your dishes you throw in the dishwasher goes into your septic system, it will block your leach field. You have to wipe down all those oils and put them in the trash. How many people wanna do that? You can't use a dishwasher if you've got a septic system. That material that feeds the dishwasher, that cleans the dishes, is too caustic and too acidic, and it hurts your pH balance of your tank. All the people that put the septic systems in make a lot of money. $15,000. They make an almost half profit. No one's, no one's looking into that. People need to be more aware, if you have a septic system, you have to maintain it. You have not shown that we've harmed the waterways, and we have to continue doing sewers. Unless you can show harm to the waterways, what are we doing? We just keep going on and on. And we've got someone that we're paying, and Deambler's paying, and they're saying it's not a conflict of, of course, it's a conflict of interest. It's insane. You can't do that. That, if that man's being paid on that job, if he works with Deambler, he has to give up his job. Or he has to give his job out to Deambler. That's conflict of interest. That's just simple, that's the way it is. We don't need sewers, 'cause the problem isn't there anymore. Most of the people that were dumping everything into these rivers were manufacturers and commercial interests, and they started the sewer projects, 'cause they wanted the taxpayers to pay for their damages. Now, you're asking all the taxpayers to keep building the sewer system when you haven't even shown a need. Where is the damage to the water system? The state and DEA make sure you can't have cesspools anymore. You gotta put in operating septic systems. They're not cheap, $15,000 is not cheap. And they'll last forever if properly maintained. Why do you need sewers? You gotta show the harm. That's it.
Thank you. Could you say that again, you didn't get that?
One fifteen flower hat. I just wanna ask, before we leave, I just wanna understand what's going on here. Now, nothing is actually being voted on tonight. And you put in two proposals, and then you put in a proposal to wait until you got more information. So, what you're saying is things are just gonna keep on going the way they're going? And there's not gonna be any stop and how long?
No, Mrs. Carlson, Mrs. Carlson moved to put those resolutions after all of the forum. They will be voted on this evening.
Okay, okay. I just wanna say, it's not quite enough. I mean, I have two priorities in Coventry. One of them, my septic system is three months old, and the other one's three years old. You know, and a cost of like $15,000 a piece. You know, and you're gonna mandate me tie it into a sewer? It's crazy.
James Blaine, 43 Hester Street. I think I have a minute forty-three left. Do you wanna clock me? Just so everybody here knows, and the town council knows, chapter 191-16, which is our sewer ordinance, it states, "Changes in Regulations. These regulations may be rescinded or modified or added to by the town council at any time when, in its opinion, such action is for the best interest of the Town of Coventry." Five people do not make up the Town of Coventry. We do.
Leo Repackus, once again, if I may, Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanna clarify a point that has been said tonight, that us in the General Assembly, my colleagues that are here, are responsible for this. But ladies and gentlemen, any bill, legislation pertaining to this town, whether it's sewers, whether it's the school bonds that we're paying all the schools, are requested from the town council. And there's a resolution asking us to facilitate to put the bill in. We have no authority, and we're not to blame, 'cause I think the blame game has already started. It's the General Assembly's fault why there's a sewer authority. And back in 2006, Mr. Levasin here, yes, I was in the General Assembly, the bill was sponsored by Senator Blaisen, myself, and Senator and Representative Sullivan, Murphy, Martin, Landroch, and Williamson, by the request of the town council back then, drafted by the solicitor, and a resolution asking us to introduce this, and that's the proper protocol in the state of Rhode Island, because the towns do not have authority to do anything. I just wanted to know that. What I was trying to get at before was that you would be able to know more about something on the Senate floor enabling legislation than I would. You've been there, that's what I was asking tonight. You blame me Monday night, and I have the video, I think a lot of crap's going through here. Well, I said, Mr. Rep. Tackus, everything you do, and myself. You're blaming us. It wasn't us, nobody's your fault. No, 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 I think, there was a whole different conversation, I think, but I'm not willing to get back into that tonight. I asked you, I asked you, you know, tonight, again, if you could lend some light to the enabling legislation that stated what we needed. I can. The town council and the solicitor drafted it. Why are you asking us the question? You should be, not you, but the past councils should be answering that question. How the legislation was enacted. Don't blame us. It's all in black and white, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
My name is Horst Lada Vignan. I actually have two houses in Coventry. One at Eight degree Road, and one on Harrington Road, right on Tylope Lake. And I'm looking at my own situation right now, because my wife and I would like to retire on the lake and rebuild a home. And I'm getting prices right now between $25,000 and $35,000 for a septic system. So, for me personally, whatever way we go, I just would like to know which way we're going, because in a couple more years, I'm going to be retiring. And at this point, I'm getting the feeling that I don't know where to go at this point. It seems like everything is in limbo at this point. I do wanna personally thank Councilman Levasin here. I've spoken to him quite a few times about these issues, him being on the subcommittee, sewer subcommittee, and he's been extremely informative to me. I can only give him kudos for him getting back to me on a daily basis sometimes. And I understand the impact on everyone financially here. I really do. I mean, I can just hear it. And I also feel for everyone up on that stage of what it must be like being yelled at by your father. But my question is this. Say the sewers go in, and there is a lien on my property. Seeing that I don't have a mortgage on the house on the lake, would they become the first lien holder on my property? And say I wanna get a construction loan. If they are the first lien holder, would that have to be paid off prior to me getting that loan?
Typically, the banks treat sewer assessments in the same fashion as taxes. In fact, the enabling legislation that was put in place for the town when it began the sewer system specifically provides that the tax, the assessments, and the use charges are to be collected in the same fashion as taxes. So, you don't have to pay the lien off if you refinance your mortgage or if you're selling your house. It's something that would be assumed by the next buyer. They'll have to know about it. It'll be on the lien certificate that's issued. Whenever anybody buys a house in Coventry, all the taxes that you owe are shown. But it doesn't, it doesn't require you to pay it off if you're gonna do construction on your house or anything like that.
The next thing, I was just doing some math, and I took $35,000 divided by 220, which is 12 months, times 20 years. Divided that out, and it came out to $145 per month. Divided by 30 days, and it came out to like $4.88. Personally, I bought a Subway sandwich that cost me $10 today. And I'm not saying, listen, everyone is in a different position here, okay? And, 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 and I'm not here to have people high for me. I'm not here for that. What I'm just saying is, I think we have to keep cool minds here, and I think through this type of debate, things are gonna be better for the Town of Coventry. And whatever way it works out, they're hearing what people are saying, and I'm sure. And the people are expressing their emotions, and they're also expressing their opinions about the situation, okay? But I think what has happened here, that people are saying that it's just not fear. Well, you know, folks, we live in Rhode Island. What is fear in Rhode Island? Personally, I don't, I don't find anything fair in Rhode Island. Thank you.
And it's over, 21-22. Another question for Mrs. Tackus.
Yeah. I'd like to know if the taxpayers can get the same deal that they got when we sold Anthony. From $930,000, we sold it for $60,000. Can we get the same deal on our sewers or on our taxes? Can we?
I guess the answer is no.
Oh, why not? That's the answer. $930,000 to $60,000. If I can talk on.
Go ahead.
Sir, thank you for asking that question. It's come up a couple times, the issue with Anthony Mill, which was a approximately 120-unit mill that was renovated, and a question arose at one of the prior meetings about why they didn't have to pay a sewer assessment. And the simple answer, as for this council, is this council never waived any assessment for Anthony Mill, ever. It was prior councils who put together a deal and charged nothing. And so, this council was faced with a very difficult decision of how do you, it was, we were actually approached, approached by the staff, who said, "We have this huge looming obligation that was never paid, and there's nothing on paper to substantiate why it wasn't paid. This is the $900,000 sewer assessment you're talking about." Okay, so let me answer your question. Let me answer your question. So, the, the town made a demand upon Brady Sullivan, who was the owner of the Anthony Mill, and it paid no assessment. And we went back and forth for many months. To bring litigation, to collect a sewer assessment that a prior council had waived and had no paper to prove anything, would have been a very difficult and challenging lawsuit for the town to bring. And one thing was for absolute certain, it would be an expensive lawsuit. After many months of going back and forth, the town put together the best deal they could get in the circumstances. And you have to remember, the circumstances were not good. And you have to remember, the circumstances were not good. But they got something. They got something. They got $60,000. You're absolutely right. But it's not fair, in my estimation, to blame this council for trying to fix something that they got that was very badly broken.
Okay, I don't blame this council for this here. I blame this council for this. You are telling me to get a sewer. Mandating me to hook up, to go down my street to pay for this. Wait a minute, when they pay nothing. I don't care what the council is or who the council is. You have no right to mandate anybody in here to have a sewer if they don't want one, when they go away with this. I don't care who the council was or what they was. Now we have to pay for them? Not right. You pay for them, not me.
My name is Addison. I'm at 670 Nadyo Road. So regarding Brady Sullivan, in case you're not aware, because it unfortunately does seem that way, Brady Sullivan, anyone can look up really easily on Google. That's a multi-billion dollar company, multi-state company. That company comes into little cities and towns. They buy up tons of little old mills. They refurbish them. They get all kinds of tax credits. Some deserve, some not. Did you research this company, any of you? Because honestly, at least somebody was here during that time. Yes?
Were there members of, what do you mean?
Were you the solicitor at the time?
No, I was not.
Okay. Did any of you research that company at all?
What I researched was the value of our case, that the, how likely we were to have success if we went all the way to trial with the case. And that's what, the company clearly had the resources. You're right, the company had the resources. If we could establish an obligation to pay, they had the resources to pay it. I don't think they're a multi-billion dollar company, as you stated. I don't think that that's factually correct. But nonetheless.
I can explain how I know that I.
Your point is taken. Well, they probably had the resources to pay an assessment.
Absolutely.
But that wasn't the only criteria that we had to use to decide to make a decision.
They make an economy, taking advantage of cities and towns. Do your research before you enter into a contract. That contract before they came here, that contract, similar to what Providence just did, that contract should have had a clause in there saying that, yes, you can have maybe some of these tax rebates. But in exchange, you have to make sure that you hire from local, from here. You have to get your materials from here. You have to spur the economy. This town, never mind out of state, where most of their contractors are from Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, Florida. Why should we have ever paid for their economies to build a mill? It shouldn't have. But the point is, it required research. So on this particular sewer project, now that you charged those $60,000, but you're going to charge a lot of townspeople here close to $50,000, because that's so acceptable, so comparable, right? So now that you have all of the, you've singled out who has to have these sewers. How many, off the top of your head, how many homes are in this town? I heard one person could answer, could formulate an approximate answer. How many homes are going to be affected by this project? If this is a question and answer session specifically for this, you should have these facts and figures. You should know the answers. You can't come here and say, "We're going to have all the answers for you," and then you sit there and look around and not have any answers. Is that because, as you said the other day, your mind is already made up?
If I've been mistaken, you did say that. We decided that Brady Sullivan, the previous owners had paid for the sewer line. They came in and renovated the empty, desolate building and then with another council.
You're not, you obviously were not listening.
We didn't make an agreement with them.
You're not listening.
Yeah, you aren't. I said that we were going to.
The train of thought is the pattern of behavior of not checking out the facts. Not doing, not vetting everything, not doing your due diligence of finding out all the facts before you.
Okay, we weren't on the council. I mean.
Regardless.
I understand.
There's new situations in this town that still set up taxpayers to pay off for you.
Thank you for your comments. And you've made your point a couple times around. So I'd like some other people to have a talk with. And then we're going to get on, I think, with the evening. Thank you for your comments.
So how many of these local companies that you're hiring here, how many are, how many people do you think you are actually employing from this town?
With all due respect, you've been given significantly more than the three minutes that other people provided.
You were speaking for most of that time. But this is just a continued pattern of behavior.
You asked a question. I answered it. Thank you.
Again, charging me, a taxpayer, charging me for your time.
My name is Bill Kennedy. I lived in Coventry thirty years. I have a septic tank that works perfectly, quite frankly, like most people here today. And now they tell me I have to come out with another $20,000. And I'll tell you, I'm 84 years old. I'm a senior citizen. There's no way that I can come up with that kind of money. Me and my wife love living in Coventry, but we've already decided that if we're going to have be faced with this kind of a problem, that we're going to have to move out of Coventry. I don't want to do that. Like I say, I love Coventry. But you put this in a position where we have no other way. Our budget is stretched as far as it can stretch with fire taxes, the water taxes, the state taxes. And when you're on fixed income, there's no place to go. And I just think I'm against this thing. And, you know, and I just think it's wrong because I know most people in here think it's wrong. And they probably have the same type of system that I have. And it works, so why change? Thank you.
Linda Ferry, 6109 Black River Road in Green. I don't really have a question, but I'd like to make a protest statement. I live in District 1. And I would like to tell you that we fully support everybody in District 3. Because we know very well what it is like to have a majority town council jam something down your throat that you do not want and did not ask for. So we fully support you in your fight. Thank you.
Karen Deliberis, 49 Mead Avenue. Karen Deliberis, 49 Mead Avenue. First thing, no question, this should not be Republican against Democrat. This should be everybody helping the people of this town. I am here. I know I'm not Republican. I'm not a Democrat. I am for who is perfect for the job. When is the next town council election? I'm sorry? I still can't hear you.
November 2018. 2018.
Thank you. Town of Coventry, please remember this. Come November of 2018. My next question is, how do we go about getting a referendum for the town people who pay the taxes and vote you in? How do we get a referendum going?
Referendum for what?
To get, to give us a chance to say no once again.
I think that's probably what we're looking for. We're trying by stopping, by.
To get to reassess how the law was voted on. I think that's exactly what we're discussing. That's the whole point.
All right. My next question is, I think, Mrs. Carlson, you asked about some invoice that wasn't submitted yet at the last meeting. Has that been submitted yet? Do the people on the road, do you know that there's still an open invoice and they can still add money? It's what they may have told you already.
And, Mr. Waters, my house was built in 1965. It is still the same septic system. Knock on wood. Thank you.
Eric Wilson, 48 Hazard Street. If over 40 years have gone by and we've got 7% connected, how is the town $29 million, over $29 million in debt with the sewer fund? We pay assessment fees. Those assessment fees assumingly cover the cost of the construction, the contracts, material costs, what have you. On top of that, if we are overcharged in our assessment fees, the town keeps that money. And on top of that, as people mentioned before, a 2.75% loan you get, you charge us as 6%. And I assume the people that are connected are paying sewer tax. So how are we $29 million in debt right now? You didn't ask someone else's problem before you?
The $29 million in debt is over the life of the remaining debt, which I think brings it up to approximately 2035. So that's the number over the years that the debt is still active. It's not a current number that we have to pay this year.
So what is our number that we have to pay this year?
About $2.5 million, a combination of our West Warwick loans and the loans that we've taken on ourselves.
That's what the town says?
Yes, sir.
What's coming in for assessment fee charges, sewer tax, and whatnot?
Sew use and assessments, approximately $2.1, $2.2 million. And there's all the small sources of revenue. So the last few years, maybe four years, fund balances have been used to offset the differential.
Fund balances?
Yes, sir.
So how are we, so if we're overcharged for this assessment fee, you keep that money. Yet how are you in debt? Especially with the whole home program? You're doubling your money. What's doubling the interest?
I'm sorry. The last couple of years, the last two loans the town has taken out through what Allen Wingwater, just 2012 and 2013. The debt service that we're recurring on an annual basis, it's not as high as the assessments that we're taking in because we're not assessing.
So is that the engineer's fault for not estimating the cost of all the drilling, hammering, and whatnot?
No, sir. The 2012, the funds that were actually earmarked for 2012 was the Quidnick, those funds were earmarked for Quidnick Village. And when the decision came not to sewer Quidnick Village, those funds were diverted as a matching grant for the 117 project. At the same time, funds were issued in 2013. Those funds were to be used for the 117, Route 117 project. But since the 2012 funds were reused, the 2013 fund sat without being used for several years with the town not paying debt service on that. So we got the 2012 loans, which, because we received federal money in 2012, the federal government said that you have to assess commercial. You don't have to assess residential for a period of time. So the assessments that we're taking in, in use fees, taking in on Route 117, which is the 2012 money, is less than the amount of the debt service. And on the 2013 loan, we're taking in no assessments against that debt payment.
Did everyone get that? How much money is in the sewer fund right now? Just out of curiosity.
Approximately $2.1 million. That's the fund balance.
So why was the loan taken out using the City Hall, or excuse me, Town Hall Annex as collateral?
We're required to maintain 125% of one year's payment of fund balances. Because we're under 125%, a decision was made to go to a third-party lender. Because what Allen Wingwater would not fund the loan because it was a dry lung day. They have a policy where they don't fund that. So a decision was made to seek a third-party loan to put a sewer line in Arnold Road South, which is Veterans Market towards the landfill, and ultimately tie that line into Briar Point. Briar Point neighborhood, once that was built, and then the Giants can tie a loan.
Okay, but, I mean, I'm not an expert or, you know, I'm not read up on my laws and whatnot. But can town property be used as collateral on the loan?
The entire loan process was thoroughly reviewed by a town solicitor who agreed that it was appropriate to be sent.
So it's appropriate and not legal? All right, well, let me move on. I got one last point.
All right, the gentleman behind.
Yeah, I was not answering my question earlier. I guess this refers to the engineers. The amount of ledge on Hazard Street, as I mentioned, you're making no progress from seven to four. It's just constant hammering and drilling by these massive machines for this ledge. Were there any boring reports done saying, "This is un, you know, this is undrivable, this is unsmashable"? Also, if the structural integrity of my home, or I assume everyone else here, their home, the foundation of their home, or, you know, the letdown issue I brought up, I hold the town solely responsible. If you want to go out to the engineering company, feel free to do so. But I hold you solely responsible for those damages. Along with the vibrations, I was wondering if there's any vibration reports taken to ensure that the structural integrity of all these homes are safe, as well as the water main that is feet, if not inches, away from where you are hammering away?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I'll interrupt you. He's my husband. That's why. No, the gentleman before asked a couple of questions regarding boring reports and vibration reports, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Could those please be answered?
Thank you.
Yeah, some good questions in there. I'll try to answer the pieces that are answerable. Yes, we do soil borings in every area before we try to proceed with sewers. In particular, one of the things we look at is we look at whether there is rock. And if there's rock, is it significant? And we try to characterize that to some degree. Indeed, we understood that Hazard Street had rock on it. It's impossible to drill every two or three feet down the road so we don't get a perfect profile. And rock tends to move up and down in New England pretty steeply. So at the very beginning of Hazard, we did actually hit more rock than we expected to hit. In addition, the rock on Hazard, as a lot of you know if you live there, is extremely hard. And that's one of the reasons they've been having such a hard time actually hammering that rock. That methodology that they use with vibratory hammering is actually required when we work in the vicinity of sensitive areas, in particular, sensitive utilities. Most places, when we deal with rock of that nature, we do blasting. We'll actually use dynamite and drill holes and we'll blast rock. We do not do that in Rhode Island in close vicinity to utilities. The rock excavation is pretty significant, that being said. The installation, we try to move as quickly as we can. We do have to hammer that rock to get it out. The contractor, I believe, is pretty much Tim out of that first big number rock. He's hoping he only got a couple more days before we hopefully come back out of that piece. And I do expect, I hope, for all the folks in the neighborhood's sake, that we can come out of that and reduce that amount of hammering. We agree that it's very annoying and very difficult to listen to if you're in the neighborhood the whole time. The challenge is, there's not a lot of other ways to get the rock up. There's only blasting and hammering. To the question that you've asked about damage to your property, we do require that the contractor maintain insurance if something happens. And that's something that you've got to monitor on an individual basis. If we were doing blasting, we would be out there doing more monitoring. If you note something in particular of concern, we do ask that you bring it to our attention with your house. But for the most part, the rock that's being taken out out there, that's the only method that we have to actually address it.
So if there's a crack in my foundation with some structural integrity, the house might not want to fall. If I like moved you, that's your fault. And you just don't point finger at me and say, "Moved by you."
Well, if you don't do that with us. If you want to file a claim, what would happen is you would present that claim to the town and the contractor's insurance company. And that contractor's insurance company and the town would then assess that claim. Generally, the insurance company will go out and take a look at the crack. I can promise you that in older homes, cracks are pretty common. And it's oftentimes, you don't notice them until you actually start to go looking for them. So the insurance company can make whatever they will of it. But I would not discourage you if you feel like your property's been damaged from taking whatever actions you think are appropriate.
What was the letdown issue? With all these vibrations, if you have letdown in your house, that first of all is letdown.
Okay, well, that's it. Next. No, next gentleman. We're going to get on.
Hang on, no, hang on.
Mr. Blaisen, that's it. They can't hear, the stenographer can't hear your questions if you don't.
They can't hear, the stenographer can't hear your questions if you don't come to the mic. Again, ask the question again.
Question about the structural integrity and the foundation of the house?
No, I--
The lead paint?
Lead paint, I guess.
So these houses, a lot of people in those houses, excuse me, all the houses in that area are fairly old. My house was built in nineteen twenty-five, and it's one of the newer ones. A lot of these houses are dealing with lead paint. Some people have finances to take care of it, some people don't. I myself am slowly taking care of it, especially with the windows, because the windows, lead paint knows friction to opening and closing, increase lead dust. Lead dust comes in the house, that's how children get lead poisoning. With these vibrations, that's unstoppable. If I open a window, I can wipe off the damn cloth, that's the exception to lead dust. That's what I do, for the windows I haven't taken care of myself. Constant vibrations from your company, constantly drilling away for eight hours, nine hours a day, nonstop. By the way, they're at the bottom of the hill, and I can feel it in the ground at the top of the hill, just for safety's sake. What about the lead dust issue? Those constant vibrations are going to create lead dust. It can come in my house, it can go out into the ground, in the soil, in the groundwater. If we're doing sewers because of, you know, the pollutants from septic and cesspools that, from my understanding, pretty much are working, what about the pollution from all this lead dust?
So your question is, you believe that you have loose lead paint?
It doesn't matter if there's lead paint or not. If there's friction cause, that creates lead dust.
Okay, so in general, if you have a condition in your home where there is freedom for the lead paint to be moved about--
Vibrations from your machines.
--you need to be very cautious with that? If vibrations from the work can cause that to dislodge, other things that would happen in your home, including movement about your home, could do that too. We do not specifically survey any of the individual homes for lid paint, that's something that is up to the landlord, if it's a rental property for the individual homeowner. I would suggest to you that you would want to be pretty cautious if you have painted, as you can actually see dust moving around. I would suggest to you, you want to be pretty cautious with that. If you have children in that house, and you see that dust floating all around the place, I would--
What if I don't see the dust?
I, again, you need to know if you have lead paint in your home.
I do know I have.
We don't take that survey. On our end, we don't take that survey.
What about the boring reports? What were the readings on that in regards to Hazard Street?
So, as I said before, we did take soil borings on Hazard Street, we found rock in various places, as we expected.
How far apart were these? Every foot?
Boreys are generally done for sewer work, approximately every three hundred feet down the road, standard. We sometimes will disperse those closer, or put an extra one in in that section. I'd say that, I think about half the borings on this show are rock, Tim, maybe more than half. We've pretty much got refusal on every single--
So if there's refusal, how do you expect to drill for it or sewer?
So what we were hoping, in a number of those places where we got refusal, the refusal was fairly deep, and what we're shooting for is to get through some of these minor nubs of rock, and get through the spot where we could get over the top of the ledge, which is still what we expect to happen once we get up around the ninth street, just before we get up to ninth street area. But, as I said, you know, we did hit a little extra on the beginning of the road, a little more than we expected to hit.
So you agree that there's a lot of edges, be a lot drilling on Hazard Street? So is that the reason the town decided to target Hazard Street, so there could be enormous assessment fee for his residents to make money?
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, uh, sorry for the interruption. Your turn.
I'll say it after everyone else does. Thank you.
Richard Faith in sixteen, Kettleaway. I hear everybody tonight, you know, everybody's at hardships, and it's costing, you know, I hear twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, and we come back to this, this Brady Sullivan that really bugs me. It really bugs me. That's almost a million dollars, right? We act like, we say, oh, it was a previous council, right, it was a previous solicitor. There was nobody here that was part of that? Nobody can explain what happened? So we put sewers in for almost a million dollars, there was no contract? How does this happen?
I can explain it. I was on the council at the time, and-- Let me tell-- It's absolutely false. When we had the negotiations with Brady Sullivan, which is a very reputable company, and we did do our homework, they did hire local contractors, especially when they did the Harris Mill. Besides that, when we were, when we were making a tax incentive plan, we were told by a solicitor that we could not use sewer for any tax incentive plan. There was not a betterment clause in the sewer. The assessment is done to pay for the cost of the sewer line. There was already a sewer line at the property. We could not charge them for assessment because there was no betterment clause. There is a betterment clause in the new way we assess, but there wasn't at the time that program was made. So it's absolutely false. We did not use sewer fund had to negotiate until to bring--
I didn't say that, I'm just asking.
Well, I'm just saying that that's the reason why there was no betterment clause, and we could not charge them. A betterment clause is, is if you're going to change the use of what you're using for, then you get charged for use, but we didn't, that's a betterment clause. And they did change the use, they went from industrial manufacturing to residential. There was not a betterment clause when we were negotiating a tax incentive plan, so we could not use a sewer fund, and we did not. Thank you.
I-- No, I was just going to ask, so there was, why did it come back around to the town that they decided they were going to charge for a sewer assessment if it was not possible to do so? So suddenly the town goes, oh, we've got a huge bill here, we've got to go, you know, charge this company, and then we suddenly go, well, we have no recourse? So there was no, why is there never any communication around here? Like the other day, we talked about adding four houses on the street off of--
Sand Street.
Sand Street. And then this gentleman here is saying, well, you have to make a call in the middle of, in the middle of, you know, a construction job. And, well, it was always supposed to be in there anyway. Well, if we're engineering that, why didn't we put it in in the first place? Why did we have to have this revelation from a resident says, oh, I'd love to have a sewer, so now we put them in? Right? And then we just kind of swing it through without voting on it as a resolution, or anything like that? This town is getting way too big, and our budgets are getting way too big, there's too much money, too many taxes, to not have checks and balances. And then you wonder why people are adding it. And everybody, you cannot forget tonight why you're here, because these gentlemen put this resolution out tonight to quiet you down. They didn't care until last meeting, when somebody called for their recourse. Then suddenly they're like, oh, let's do an economic study, so we can find something else to pay for. It's just like, you know, as I said earlier, it's like a Ponzi scheme. We spent all this money, and now we need to find new suckers to pull into this. We cannot keep doing this.
All right, this will be the last two people talking, and then we're going to get on to our council business. All right? The last two, I said, ma'am.
This is the town, right?
Yeah, that is. I'm town council president, and you're the last two.
Yes, you said that.
All right?
But not for long.
Thank you.
Okay, so I asked before, if you knew how many-- I'm sorry. Janice Stenson, S-T-E-N-S-O-N, six seven zero, not equal. So I asked previously if you knew how many homes were affected, but none of you were able to give that answer, correct? So if you're not able to answer that question, then it's pretty obvious, I would think, that you're not able to know how many of those homes have failing septic systems, correct? You've assumed that septic systems are going to fail, and that they're failing, and therefore we need these sewers. That's an assumption. Rather than arbitrarily choose a couple of streets that you say must have it, as part of your research, should you not have looked at the records first if it's needed? If someone just put--